So congratulations earlier on being well missed and you've done a great job for the city. I mean, I didn't even know some of the things that you had accomplished where you are well thought of in this community and within our management staff and so we congratulate you for a job well done for this city.
Some other officers are here?
A little bit.
You got two and three.
Four. You got four right here.
Oh. This is in recognition of Police Officers Memorial Day and Police Appreciation Week. And this is again from Mayor Dukes and I know he wishes he was here because he's retired officer. Whereas National Police Week is to honor the service and sacrifice of those enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and dangers in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all our people. And whereas by joint resolution approved October 1st, 1962, the Congress has requested the President designate May 15th of each year as Police Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week which such May 15th occurs as Police Appreciation Week. And whereas the members of the City of Midwest City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the residents and merchants of our community, responding to over 80,000 calls in 2022 and working to decrease Part 1 dangerous crimes in our community by 3% over the last five years. And so therefore I, Matthew D. Dukes, Mayor of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do proclaim the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023, as Police Appreciation Week in the City of Midwest City. And we publicly salute the service of our law enforcement officers and urge all citizens to show appreciation to our local police officers. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the honored seal of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, to be affixed to this 25th day of April in the year of the When something doesn't flush or something doesn't come out of the faucet, these are the people that we call upon in the middle of the night 365 days a year.
Snow's on the pavement, push it out.
And the ice and the trees. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and service that are of vital importance to sustainability and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Midwest City. And whereas...
Jill, you gotta put all these big words in here.[1118.83][1118.83](Laughter)
Whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and service could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the public works professional, a very true statement, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Midwest City to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. So therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week and recognize the efforts of all the public works professionals in Midwest City, Oklahoma. Invite all citizens to join me in recognizing the substantial contributions they make to protect our health, safety, and quality of life on a daily basis. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the honored seal of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, affixed to this 25th day of April in the year of the Lord 2023. Thank you very much.[1221.42][1221.42](Applause)
You have a wide, wide angle on that, don't you?
Make sure you get the pink shirt over here.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm standing next to Steve. He makes me look good.[1252.01][1252.01](Laughter)
(Inaudible)
And I just wanted to say while I have a moment, thank you very much for the proclamation. These folks came in not during their normal work hours to be here today to experience this, to be a part of it, and they brought a lot of equipment for everybody to look at. Thank you council persons for being out there to have a look at it. These guys, these gals provide essential services. They are everyday heroes and we appreciate the recognition. Thank you very much.[1310.13][1310.13](Applause)
Okay, hold on just a second. Paul Streets just stole my thunder.[1318.42][1318.42](Laughter) I was just going to say, I got to meet a lot of you outside. I just want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do, for all the citizens of Midwest City. And thank you for taking your time to come out and meet and be present for the proclamation. A lot of times we don't get but one representative. Sometimes it's the department heads and we see them all the time. Like, we know you all are doing the real work and we appreciate you so much. So thank you all from the bottom of our hearts.[1353.53][1353.53](Applause) And also, I'd like to know where you get one of those good-looking Midwest City hats because I could use one for fishing. Is that strictly a public works thing or can anybody wear one of those because...
Justin wants to know if the dollar application did it happen.[1374.13][1374.13](Laughter)
I am qualified to drive that John Deere out there.[1378.13][1378.13](Laughter)
Paul, don't go there. Don't go there.[1381.69][1381.69](Laughter)
Farm girl.
I know where she's going with it.
Farm girl, I can drive that John Deere. I'm just saying type of thing. So, and you may need the help with the rain. So if you need to, call on me. I can work Saturdays.[1394.82][1394.82](Laughter)
Katie Leenhardt? Katie is with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services and thank you very much for coming. Whereas in 1949, the Mental Health America Organization, formerly known as the National Association for Mental Health, began the National Mental Health Awareness Month in May. And whereas we in Midwest City and the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services believe that Oklahomans deserve to have mental health and addiction services within reach without fear of judgment or shame through the evidence-based crisis response continuum, which meets people where they are and where they need it most or when they need it most. And whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being and helps to sustain an individual's thought process, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt, to change, or face adversity. And whereas mental health adversely affects those abilities and often becomes life-threatening, increasing suicidal thoughts and attempts. And whereas every identification and treatment can make a profound difference in the successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas a 988 mental health lifeline is free, confidential, and accessible to support any Oklahoma experiencing a mental health crisis through trained mental health professionals via text or call, mobile crisis teams, urgent care, and crisis centers and follow-up appointments. So therefore, I, Matt D. Dukes II, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do proclaim the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Midwest City and urge all residents and merchants to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote identification and treatment of mental illness. In witness thereof, witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and caused the honored seal of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, to be fixed on the 16th day of May in the year of our Lord 2023.[1531.63][1531.63](Applause) Sarah? Yes, Sarah.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say to the whole City of Midwest City, thank you so much for recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. We are so grateful and I'm really grateful to be here on behalf of the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. So thank you all. Happy Mental Health Awareness Month. Do something for yourself this month and I appreciate it. Thank you.[1582.21][1582.21](Applause)
And I don't know if we have a representative here for this, but this is, even though it's the last, it's certainly not the least important. This is a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas in 2015, the first Friday in June was officially recognized as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and dubbed as Wear Orange Day, as it is the safety color that symbolizes caution and the value of human life. And whereas the goal of this annual event began to honor a 15-year-old Hadiya Pendleton who was shot and killed in Chicago in 2013, one week after performing at President Obama's second inauguration parade, with orange being the color her friends wore to honor her and raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas it has grown into a nationwide awareness movement since the gun violence touches every segment of our society and impacts people of all ages. And whereas in Oklahoma, according to the 2021 CDC National Center for Health Statistics, we see an average between 760 to 836 gun deaths each year per 100,000 of our population, ranking our state between 12th or 13th in the highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. So therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Friday, June 2nd, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. In Midwest City, encourage all residents to commit to helping reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of dangerous hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the honored seal of the City of Midwest City, Oklahoma, affixed the 16th day of May in the year of our Lord 2023. Like I said, it's not, it was the last one, but it's certainly an important one.[1720.01][1720.01](Applause)
Well, wait a minute, I need to do the...
Oh, that's right. Community announcements.
Okay. So, community announcements for tonight, we'll start with the Sales and Use Tax Report for the month of May. Our sales and use tax for the month was up 5.38% year-over-year for the month. As I compare it to the other metro cities, only one other city in the metro had a higher rate than us and that was 6.31 in Chalktall, Dell City, Oklahoma City, Edmond, Moore, Hara. We're all, we're either flat or... Moore, Hara, we're all, we're either flat or relatively flat. One of them was in the negative, so our sales tax continues to be strong, so thank you to the citizens of Midwest City who shop here and make our city operate. As far as announcements, Memorial Day, your pickup, trash pickup is on Monday, May twenty-ninth, which is Memorial Day. Your pickup service will be moved to the following Wednesday on May thirty-first. And I'll go through, this is ODOT, I should have made Brandon come up here and do this one. ODOT is advising, I know. You don't want to do this? ODOT is advising motorists to plan now for a full weekend closure of eastbound and westbound I forty between I thirty-five and Choctaw Road. And that's a long way, starting at seven PM, May nineteenth, through five-thirty AM, May twenty-second, weather permitting. Westbound I forty ramps from Anderson, Douglas, Industrial Boulevard, Town Center, Air Depot, and Hutterburg will be closed. Eastbound I forty ramps from Scott Street in Dell City, Sunny Lane, Southeast Fifteenth, Sooner, Air Depot, Town Center will be closed. Southbound and northbound Douglas Boulevard ramps to eastbound I forty will be closed. Motorists may check for updates on ODOT's social media channels at OKDOT and Department of Transportation dot org. So, be ready, that should be a traffic nightmare, needless to say. I assume there will be a lot of traffic on Twenty-Ninth Street.
Shop Midwest City.
Yeah, shop Midwest City, let's just mirror them all off into the parking lot, Sooner Town Center, it'd be fine. No, I didn't say that in public, did I? Okay. The city of Midwest City is offering full scholarships to income-eligible students from grades one through eight to attend the Rose State Kids College STEM Summer Program. For more information regarding scholarships, please contact our grants management office at seven-three-nine-one-two-two-one, or Rose State College at seven-three-three-seven-four-eight-eight to find out what program will be offered in two thousand and twenty-three. It'll be an excellent program, though. Lastly, do we have our fire chief here today? We do not. We'd like to congratulate our fire chief, Bert Norton. In April, Chief Norton received the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association two thousand and twenty-three Chief Officer Leadership Award, voted on by his fellow fire chiefs. This award was established to recognize actions and activities of chief fire officers in Oklahoma that produce progressive improvements in safety, efficiency, and effectiveness in areas of fire prevention, suppression, and administration that are outstanding in their nature or impact. This award was presented, is presented annually to one chief officer, so congratulations to Chief Norton for this award. With that, Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Yes, you do.
These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any council member requests to discuss an item or items, or if unanimous consent is not received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, motion passes. We'll now move into the discussion items. Discussion item number one.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action, excuse me, of passing and approving a resolution of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, authorized the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Midwest City, county of Oklahoma, state of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, September twelfth, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, the question for their approval or rejection of approving an ordinance relating to the excise tax. So, this is an item that we have been discussing with the city leadership for some time regarding, we have a current sales tax of nine point one. Of that point, four oh one five of the sales tax goes for paying off the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, so we had to create a revenue bond to renovate our wastewater treatment plant, bring it up to modern standards. And this sales tax will sunset as late as January of two thousand and twenty-five, or as early as late this year, depending on how much sales tax comes in, kind of makes how the payment goes. So, if our sales tax is up, and it's been for some time, like four point five, that means this point four oh one five will equate to more than we anticipated when we amortized the payment schedule. So, this sales tax will come off soon, and what we're asking the citizens, it's about four and a half million dollars, and we're asking the citizens to extend this sales tax, not for the wastewater treatment plant, but for capital improvements. Our city has been woefully underfunded for capital improvements since the year two thousand, based on, we have a point two five, but a lot of it goes for the Reed Center and the Sheridan to enhance, bringing in people to shop our city and to visit our city at the Sheridan, or now it's a Delta Hotel, but our Reed Conference Center. So, we receive roughly seven hundred thousand to a million dollars a year for capital improvements in the city, and just making matches for Brandon's road projects, our federal highway projects, the engineering is between five and ten million dollars a year. Just, and as we look at out at drainage, you've seen a lot of rain over the past couple of weeks, you've seen a lot of drainage issues in our city, you see a lot of drainage issues within our neighborhoods, and our drainage improvements are not being maintained as well as they need to be maintained for an effective flow, our streets. We do the best we can with our streets, but it is becoming more and more expensive. So, we have roughly over a hundred projects identified and ranked within our capital improvement structure, and they exceed a hundred million dollars of needs within our community. So, this is things, this sales tax will help us to start tackling all this infrastructure needs. Four and a half million a year won't go a long way towards a hundred, but it's better than seven hundred thousand dollars a year, and it'll help us to formulate more staff towards the drainage projects and just the capital cost of concrete and grubbing the drainage infrastructures, rebuilding the streets, overlaying the streets, building sidewalks, all the many things, the many improvements that we need for our city. It'll also help with our water and sewer infrastructure, just in the original square mile alone, the pipe bursting estimation is twenty-two million dollars to pipe burst all those old sewer infrastructure within just the original square mile. So, take the entire city of Midwest City, and the twenty-two million's not even on the hundred million dollar list, so it just goes on and on. So, there's a great need in our community. We're not asking to raise new taxes, we're just asking to keep our sales tax the way it has been at nine point one, and to use this money for capital improvements.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, there's going to be a split in that money too, right?
That's correct. That's excellent point, Vice Mayor, is, so, we also have a park infrastructure, and parks do not always get a whole lot of love in the budget. I mean, it's, we have a lot of rank needs that we do, and so parks sometimes come in maybe fourth or fifth place, not even first, second, or third, and so we'd like to divide this eighty percent into the capital improvements and twenty percent to help with our parks system within the city.
And here again, correct me if I'm wrong, the plan is, I heard you say that you've already developed a list of a hundred projects that need to be, that you know today need to be, that's not what the future, there's going to be, you're going to take it, if I understand what we've been told, you're going to take that hundred, and you're going to internally rank them. It's not going to be divided by ward, it's going to be divided whichever one is the most critical, is going to get the funding first, and then it'll work its way down the list. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have a rating structure on our streets and some of our other capital improvements, but we will hire outside consultants to come in and help us do some master studies. The parks, stormwater, are going to need master studies, and we've done a lot of work in the sewer system, but we'll need some more work on a comprehensive plan in the sewer system. So, we'll have a ranking structure from an outside consultant to help us to make sure that we try to get everything that is a priority, we try to prioritize based on need.
And we're going to, with the parks, it's important that citizens realize that there's, we have over thirty parks that people probably don't even realize there's that many in Midwest City, but there's some of these smaller parks that are in the neighborhoods that the city, they are city parks, and they are in dire need of updated equipment, and just bringing it into the future. And if we're going to, if Midwest City's going to grow and continue to grow, we've got to work on the infrastructure. You got to have, you know, the public work guys were here, you got to have water, you got to have sewer, you got to get rid of the water when it comes too much, you got to have streets. And in order to encourage younger people to move into our city, we got to have a place for their kids to play, and that's the hope, is to take twenty percent of this money, of the four, around four million dollars a year, and it'll go into upgrading the parks. There's several of them that need ADA upgrades, they need new equipment, they just need to be upgraded where people want to take their kids to play. And it's hope, and I can guarantee you, and you can, by, when we vote on this tonight, everybody on this council is committed to not raising the tax. You're going to hear, though, the taxes are going to go up, it's not going up. I did the figures on, I used Mathis Homes as an example the other day with some people. You go over there and you spend a thousand dollars, it's going to be a difference of four dollars on a thousand bucks, the difference what you would pay, around four dollars. I don't have the exact numbers with me today, but it's not that much, but if you add it up over a period of a year, it grows. And this is going to be, this isn't a tax that isn't going to go away, so we're going to get to work off that list, and then we're going to develop, be able to upgrade the parks. This is a quality-of-life issue in Midwest City. And he mentioned the original mile. You know, that's, they need a lot of help over there with the water and the sewer, and we know it. There's a lot of streets that need, that we didn't get to with the bond, there's a lot of work, and this is the only way that we feel like we can bring Midwest City into the next millennium, or whatever you want to call it. And studies show that about forty-eight percent of the sales tax expended in Midwest City is from non-residents, so they're shopping in our centers. So, this is a way where we can not tax our citizens anymore, but we can get some revenue so we can move into the future. And I'll open it up for comments from any, and if you guys want to go on the record, we're not raising taxes. Now's the time to do it.
Pat, I actually think it's four dollars and seventeen cents per thousand.
I was close. That's the math guy, right there.
And I'm surprised that it's only forty-eight percent that comes from without, if we do something on income and add the lump tax, it's a hundred percent paid for by the residents and the business owners. The sales tax, a good percent, if not half, is paid for by non-residents. And as you heard Mr. Lyon say a few minutes ago, we're up four point three five percent so far. So, the sales tax limits that we have hit, which we are not going up, are still embraced not only by our citizens, by everybody outside the rest of the community that still flocks here to shop. And this is a wonderful opportunity for us to keep our taxes where they are and continue Midwest City on the trajectory where it is, and we are continuing to improve all aspects of our citizens' lives.
I was just going to ask, do we have anybody who signed up to speak with regard to this issue, or ask any questions?
No. And for the citizens that aren't here tonight, we do plan on, once the, next month, June, there are no neighborhood association meetings because there's one big celebration, we plan on going to meet with every association that will have us in July and August and September. For the people that don't have a neighborhood association, the plan is to have a couple of town hall meetings, and we'll go wherever the people want us to go to explain this, but the important thing, and I please beg you to believe us, there's going to be people out there that say we're raising the taxes, we're not. It's staying exactly what you pay today. If you vote yes on it, you would be doing, it would be the same thing.
And I was just going to say, again, Pat's exactly right, it's a quality-of-life issue. And personally, from my ward, you all have spoken about the original mile and the need for infrastructure upgrades. You know, that was the original mile of Midwest City. So, the nineteen forties is when those homes were built, it's when the infrastructure was put in. There are needs for street maintenance, there are needs for, you know, again, sewer line upgrades, water line upgrades. We've done a study, one of the ones that Mr. Lyon was referencing, for Holloway Park, which is another one that's in my ward, that all the needs that they have with regard to problems with drainage. The vice mayor has been the champion of dealing with drainage problems that citizens have been experiencing, and each one of us on this council, I think, has called upon him with his experience and expertise in dealing with drainage issues, to address concerns when we've had constituents come forward with significant drainage problems. Maintaining the taxes where they're at right now will allow us to create a fund in order to work down through the list of infrastructure needs that we have, as well as improve our parks. Regional Park, for example, is what I consider the diamond park, if you will, like, it's the largest, the most well-known, but it doesn't look like a diamond anymore. The playground equipment is dated, it's not truly ADA compliant from what I've seen as far as, we don't have ADA-related park equipment there for kids who have special needs. And so, there's a lot that we could do by simply maintaining where we're at with the taxes, which is, again, not going to be at any increased cost to citizens, and if we were to let the tax expire, there would not be any significant savings by citizens. So, it's a little investment that will go a long way. So, with that being said, if no one has anything else they want to share, I would, sorry, Councilman Reed.
One proposal that I'm going to make will be on Section A, where it starts off on line thirty-eight. On the next page, I would like to add, where it says wastewater collection lines and for any, pardon me, consulting or support, I would like to add between for any and consulting to read for any personnel requirements and/or, that way we can properly hire, because it will be more beneficial for us to hire staff than to use outside services. And on Section B, which on this page one hundred and six would be line six, I would like to, in those exact same verbiage, between any and the word or consulting, I would like to have personnel requirements and/or there as well.
Reason, and I'll take that as a motion, and the reason that's important is, our staff has proven already, given the equipment and enough personnel and time, that they can fix a serious drainage issue, and that was kind of a test deal that they did, and they fixed it a whole lot cheaper by doing it in-house than they did outside. So, we're going to, by doing this, we're committing to hiring people to do this work by city employees at a lot cheaper than a contractor, and I'll take yours as a motion.
Second.
And that is going to be for item D one. Okay?
You're on D two.
No, we're on D one.
I asked him, and he said it was D one. You want to just...
I can, but I underline it as we will. Discussion, consideration, and possible action of passing, improving a resolution of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma.
You're on two.
That's D two, Tim. You need to do the ordinance first.
Okay, well, then my agenda's incorrect.
So, Jill, you were correct, ma'am.
We're fixing it right now.
Okay, so, let me get on the agenda. Discussion, consideration, and possible action of proving an ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter Forty, Taxation, Article Two, Sales Tax, Section Forty, dash forty- forty dash forty-four, Limited Purpose Tax, Sales Subject to Tax, fifty-five hundredths point five five of one percent, Providing for Repealer and Severability.
Don, do I need to renew a new motion since we were?
You, you've made, just restate your motion, yes.
Uh, make a motion to pass on A and B, add personnel requirements and/or where it goes properly.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
I, just to make one note, under Oklahoma law, since that was an ordinance passage, it does have, it did need to pass with at least four votes, and so we had, uh, six, so we're good.
Okay.
Okay, so are we on to D two?
Yes.
Discussion and consideration, and possible action of passing, approving a resolution of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the city of Midwest City, County of Oklahoma, State of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, a question for their approval or rejection of approving an ordinance relating to the excise tax.
Move to approve.
I need.
Oh.
We need to have the exact same thing on number two and number three as well. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the same change for A and B, where we're going to put personnel requirements and/or consulting in between those spots on A and B.
With that said, I'll just second Sean's motion with the amendment as before.
Let's hold on the vote for just one second. Is there anything different on this other than what he tried? Okay, so we're okay to go on? Okay, there's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes. Question item number three.
Discussion, consideration, possible action, improving an ordinance, amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter forty.
Whoa, that, that's D one. You need to do the proclamation now.
Or this is, this is wrong again, then? Okay, I'm just gonna, no more paper. Discussion, consideration, possible action, issuing a proclamation, calling for a special election in the city of Midwest City, County of Oklahoma, State of Oklahoma, on Tuesday, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, with a question for the approval or rejection of ordinance number relating to the levy of an excise tax.
And I'm gonna sound like a broken record. I'm gonna make a motion to approve in, adding personnel requirements and/or to A and B, just like we did in the previous two.
And I'm gonna second that motion.
Okay, there are a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion pass.
I think so. Now we'll go to item four.
Item number four.
Discussion, consideration, and possible action, an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter forty-three, Water, Sewer, Sewage Disposal and Stormwater Quality, Article three, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division eight, U.S. rate of charges, Section forty-three, two thirty, capital improvement charges, providing repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency, which will be a separate vote.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, members of the city council. You just voted on the sales tax to amend that. A couple of months after the sales tax was originally approved, there was a determination made that that point four oh one five was not gonna be sufficient to pay down the debt. So the city council then added a fee to sewer, to sewer charges to help pay off the wastewater treatment plant. Needless to say, it worked well. And as you heard the city manager say, that has accelerated the timeframe for sunsetting the sales tax. This fee also had a sunset, it's March first of two thousand and twenty-five, or when the debt is cleared. Obviously, as you heard the city manager say, that debt is clearing shortly. So what this change would do in the city ordinance to help, to help out this process a little bit is to change what the fee can be used for as opposed to paying down the debt, it's to do infr, it's to do water and wastewater infrastructure requirements. This will then assist those water and wastewater issues that have just been discussed here, whether it's pipe bursting in Ward one or throughout the city, or we have capacity wastewater issues over in the eastern part of the city. It will help with those infrastructure needs. So what this city ordinance does, this change does, is it changes the fee from paying down the debt to infrastructure, water and wastewater infrastructure. With that said, again, much like with the sales tax, this does not result in any increase in any fees, this is just to maintain that fee, and it changes its purpose, as I have discussed. This does have an emergency on it due to the, the paydown that we have, so it will require, as you heard the acting mayor say, two votes. One vote, the initial vote, will be for passage of the ordinance change on this fee, and then the second is to declare an emergency. I will let you know that under Oklahoma law, for the emergency to pass, it will take five yes votes for the emergency to pass. And I have any, I'll take any questions.
Just a reminder to council, this is what we talked about for helping us prepare for sewer treatment plant upgrade, potential upgrades.
And once again, just to clarify, this was not going to be an additional cost to the citizens of Midwest City, it's going to be allowing us the opportunity to build for improvements with no additional cost beyond where we're at right now.
That's the way I read it.
That is correct.
So with that said, if Mr. Reed has no amendments, I'm gonna go ahead.
Just a, just a quick question. So you say an emergency, obviously, we don't have to carry this until we pay off the other?
Right, in other words, we no longer need this, the money for this fee to go to pay off the debt on the wastewater treatment plant. So by passing it as an emergency, we can immediately shift that, start shifting that money as of tomorrow to, starting to set up an account, and we have set this up so it goes into an interest-bearing, its own interest-bearing account, so that it has, it can then go and be used for those infrastructure needs as those needs develop.
But if the sales tax, for some reason, took a dive and, and we needed to supplement the sales tax to pay off the note, we could use it for that as well.
Sure.
So it gives us more flexibility.
Yes.
I figured that's what it was, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Sorry, Rick. So, again, with all of that said, I'm going to move first for an approval of the item as written.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay, we need a second vote.
And then I'm going to move for implementation on an emergency basis, as discussed by the city attorney tonight.
Motion to approve the emergency clause?
That'll work.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion passes with the emergency. Item number five.
This is a PC twenty-one forty-one, public hearing discussion, consideration, possible action of an ordinance to redistrict from planned unit development, now simplified planned unit development after passage of a Scribner's era agenda, um, agenda item governed by R six, single-family detached residential district R six and residential commercial district C one, in consideration of a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from commercial and single-family detached residential to commercial for the property described as a part of the southwest quarter of the section thirty-six township, twelve north range, two west, then in Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma, more particularly described as follows, beginning at the point of six hundred and thirty-two point oh two feet east of the southwest corner of the said, um, of the said southwest corner, thence north two hundred feet, thence east one hundred feet, thence two hundred feet, thence one hundred feet to the point of the beginning, also known as ninety thirty-five East Reno Avenue. Don't let me read that again, please.
Did anyone sign up to speak on this? Does anybody have any questions on this one?
I got it. Vice Mayor Byrne and council members, this former single-family home at ninety thirty-five East Reno Avenue was rezoned less than two years ago to accommodate mixed uses with the eastern three-fourth reserved for single-family residential use and the remodeled attached garage for a professional office. The Patterson, the Patterson family owns the building, and now they want to amend into the restricted commercial C one district to allow the property to be remodeled for use as a childcare center. The sixty-one-year-old seventeen hundred and eight square foot single-story building sits on the north side of East Reno Avenue, just east of North Douglas Boulevard, a street that carries about twelve thousand cars a day. In the immediate vicinity is a mixture of uses, including a mini storage, one and two family dwellings, professional offices, churches, a pharmacy, and an auto repair shop. The proposed use is not expected to have a negative, negative impact on the surrounding properties. The property is already connected to our utilities and has been for years. County records indicate that it has been in the owner's family since May of nineteen eighty-one, and that is the first year that it was included in the commercial zoning district. Advance notice was sent to the property owners listed on page seventeen and nineteen of the staff report, but no comments were received. The future land use, use map in chapter four of the comprehensive plan is found on page nine of your, of the staff report. It is, in our opinion, the map must be changed prior to approving the proposed zoning amendment. The site currently lies in the commercial, single-family detached typology, and it should be reclassified to the commercial typology only before proceeding with the zoning amendment to C one. The planning commission at its May second meeting unanimously recommended approval of this change to the land use map, as well as approval of the zoning amendment to C one. The applicant, Ms. Bonnie Patterson, is in our audience tonight if you have any questions. And the suggested motion is found on the bottom of page six of your staff report.
And parking isn't an issue there, too, because the picture's kind of deceptive. There's a concrete slab behind the house, correct, Robert?
That's correct.
That'll take care of any parking. I go by it several times a day, so it's, there is parking behind it.
We, we feel that there is adequate parking, and even if they needed a couple extra spaces, the, the unimproved part of the property is, is still a possibility.
Ms. Bonnie?
The applicant's here.
How are you? So will this be in addition to your current business that you have, or will this be, you moving your business now?
Ma'am, can you come down to the podium? Could you state your name and the address, too?
My name is Bonnie Patterson. My address is eleven oh eight Huntington Avenue in Oklahoma City. And this property would be in addition to my current center that I have owned for twenty-eight years, and it will be a complement to what I currently do and accommodate school-aged children. So right now, I only have children who are infants through five-year-olds, and so this will take care of the children who progress out of that program from six years old to twelve.
Where's your current property located as far as your other center?
One oh seven two oh Southeast fifteenth Street.
It's almost a Westminster.
That's what I was trying to do in my head.
About two miles away.
Okay. And so I'm going to look at you, since you answered that question, and obviously you know the area, and I'm just gonna state, my concern about this is the aspect of this sitting where it does, between Douglas and Reno, and being so close to the street for a childcare center. So I, I don't know, and Rick, if you can shed some light on, like, where the other center is located, the degree of traffic flow there, et cetera, and, and really, ma'am, what I'm wanting to hear from you is to allay my fears about if we were to approve this, keeping the kids safe. I mean, is this gonna be fenced so that any outdoor activities are within six-foot privacy fencing, or what, what are we talking? Do I answer? Yes.
We have a grassy area behind the building, so there would be no children in the front playing or, you know, socializing out there, and that would all be fenced in. I haven't done it yet, but I'm waiting for Oki to plan out the lines so I can do that. And so that will be beyond the parking area, and it will be completely to the very back of the, of the property, and there's a church parking lot there, and then there's also residents next door, so there's no, nothing else in the back that would create a problem for the children.
And again, what was the age of the children, like?
Five through twelve. Would be older children.
Yeah.
Well, six through twelve, actually.
Yeah. So do you, I know at your current place, because my grandson actually attends there, and those doors are locked, so nobody can get in except parents who have a code to get in.
Right.
Kids can't access or get out.
Right.
Without, so there would be some protection there.
Yes.
But, again, I, I'm familiar with childcare centers, even though my child is now nineteen, but I have lived those days, and I definitely think that we have a need for good childcare centers in our community. So I, I applaud the undertaking, I just have concerns about where the property is situated to make sure. So I guess, from my perspective, if I could, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to go to the page six recommendation on the motion, I would like to have it be addressed in terms of ensuring that the privacy fencing is included in, on the property if the zoning is to change and it's to be used as a childcare center. That would kind of be my ask, and it seems that you're planning for that anyhow, so.
Yes, ma'am, I am. I, privacy fencing between me and the resident, and then as far as the church goes, I'm not sure how that plays out, since we're both commercial properties. I was planning chain link between myself and the church.
Anybody want to weigh in on this, or? I may be the only nervous Nellie in the room, but.
There's a site plan on page twelve of the staff report that shows the playground on the northernmost area of the lot. It appears to be designed to be eighty feet in north to south and approximately ninety feet wide.
No, Susan, I think your, your concerns are well noted. And like I said, I travel that route multiple times a day. The pictures are deceptive a little bit because the lot is bigger than it looks on there, and there is a lot of room behind that house, enough for adequate parking and fencing, and I'm sure that if it's gonna be a licensed daycare, the state's gonna have something to say about.
Yes, they have come by to investigate the property, and they have said that it's fine. I do have approval from my licensing representative.
With fencing or without fencing?
With fencing.
Okay. If it meets the state's licensure requirements, I'm fine with that. So I guess I will turn my attention to the motion and throw this out if nobody has anything else on this one.
Okay, this is a public hearing, does anybody from the audience, that, no one has signed up, but is anybody, as a result of our conversation, have something they want to add to this? Seeing none? Here's a motion.
Motion to approve.
Hold, wait a second.
I was just gonna read the one that was on page six, since Ms. Ritchie was kind enough to prepare that for us, but I mean, if, if, if we don't need this text, is there a reason we need this text, boss?
Not that I know of.
Carry on.
I haven't even looked at this. Is there, was there a motion and a second? Okay, motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Good luck.
Congratulations, thank you so much for being here. Point of personal privilege, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you, sir.
For about five minutes, please. No. Eleven four thirteen, four fifteen, four thirty-three, four thirty-seven, and four thirty-nine located at twelve hundred North Air Depot Boulevard as dilapidated buildings as defined by Section nine dash two of the municipal code and setting a date to submit an approval plan of action to the chief building official.
Thank you, Mr. Line.
Mr. Bundy, I assume, is the same as Mr. Fryer?
Yes, he couldn't be here tonight.
Okay.
So before you, there is a resolution to declare all structures at twelve hundred North Air Depot Midwest Point Apartments as dilapidated. In the resolution, it asks for thirty days, at which point authorizing the city manager to terminate utilities. This is basically an ongoing issue. The fire marshal originally gave them an unsafe building notice in twenty twenty, and we followed up this around January, February this year. In March, we did some site inspections of some of the interiors, which we sent around some pictures, and you can see some of them here. Basically, all the buildings on that site have problems. In a follow-up today, they've noticed that some of it's even worse now. Okay. That some of it is worse now because of the moisture that's been getting in behind the siding. That is the principal issue, is the water damage that's getting behind the siding. There's a lot of issues that I can go through, if you like, but it's just an unsafe structure all the way around.
So it looks like, and it's kind of hard to see the pictures from twenty twenty, are kind of black and white and hazy compared to the ones that just came out. It doesn't look like they've done anything substantial. It looks like it's actually in worse shape from, is that correct? Because those are kind of harsh.
That is correct. They have not done anything since the original pictures. Our same inspector went into the building in twenty twenty as of twenty twenty-three and said, no, this is exactly the same, or worse. But they have not improved anything or fixed anything.
People are living in this, right?
That is correct. People are living in those apartments. Or some of them. The one that's up right now, people aren't living in that one, but they're living above it, and they're living beside them.
So if we condemn this, we can get ahold of Red Cross if need be to help these folks if they're... Because we're going to, if we do this, and I can't imagine living in that, but if we do this, there are going to be some people who won't have a home. So can we contact Red Cross or someone like that to see if there's any help that would be available for these folks?
So we have talked to staff, and if we go forward with this, what we plan to do is compile a list of resources with all our different agencies and give them to the residents. We have reached out to a couple of different other agencies, as well as the CAOs. Neighborhood Services has resources. There's a lot of people, and we're going to compile a nice list for all the residents. That's just a very unfortunate thing, and it's bothered us quite some time that they're in unsafe condition now, and I think the only way to help them is to get them out of the unsafe situation.
And if we could back up a couple of frames on the photos, one more, please. This is one that, I mean, all of the pictures are deplorable, in my opinion, but this one with regard to a screw jack being used to support the second-floor apartment is the most disconcerting to me. And if I'm understanding from what I read on this agenda item, Mr. Bundy, and what you just said, these photos were taken in March, correct, of this year?
That is correct.
And the notification was made to the owner of the property in March with regard to the inspection that was done, correct?
That is correct.
So basically, we're looking at around a sixty-day period has already passed, and you're saying that the conditions are even worse now than they were, represented in the photos, and nothing has happened since twenty twenty?
That is correct.
It's laid follow since twenty twenty, and then it's laid follow yet again for yet another sixty days. So I say that to say, with regard to being able to take action to try to assist the folks who are living in these deplorable conditions, I understand the thirty-day period, and I don't know that the thirty-day period is required per notice.
Yes, we're following the dilapidated procedures that are set out in state statute that also are mirrored within our municipal code. But yes, that is one of the requirements that is contained in state statute.
I wanted to make sure of that, because the idea of passing it even yet another thirty days, knowing the situation, is just appalling to me. But I understand we have got to comply with the notice requirements, and we have folks whose lives will be impacted. And I don't know that this is necessarily appropriate, but I'm going to throw it out there anyhow. I'm curious with regard to the resources that are available, if it's possible for someone to check with other apartment complexes within the municipality to see, a lot of times, there are move-in specials that are offered by apartments anyhow where you get your first month's rent-free or not prorated, but discounted something, because these folks will be experiencing some moving expenses. And I also think that this might be a project where we should speak about activating the volunteer crew that the mayor had put together previously, about trying to assist these folks to move from the property, if that's possible. So I don't know that that's really allowable, Mr. City Attorney. I mean, I don't think it can hurt to have a staff member contact local apartment complexes and see if we could be able to help these folks.
I know Mr. Bundy has been pulling resources together, obviously. Yes, we could reach out to other complexes to see if they would be able to provide any support. And obviously, if anybody wants to volunteer to assist, that is absolutely allowable.
Is this something the CGPD grant money's available for to help out with?
We'd have to check with Terry on that.
Usually, I don't feel sorry for a landlord.
Before we get too far into planning on what we're going to do after a vote, this is a public hearing we've had, one person, William Brazelton. And I don't have ESP. I don't want to go under record.
What?
I do not have ESP. Can you give us your address, please?
Mine just is twelve fifty North Air Depot Boulevard, which is directly next door to this apartment complex. A little background about myself.
Yes, sir, just a reminder, you have four minutes on this stuff.
Okay. I live directly next door to this apartment complex and have lived there for nine years. And in those nine years, there have been numerous police and fire department calls to this complex. I personally know several people who live in this apartment complex who are just imporable about the conditions that they have to go through every day. As an example, there's, and I didn't take a picture, there's a stairway leading to one of the front apartments. One of the stairs has just rusted away, and they just recently put some boards up to keep people from walking through there, but they haven't done anything to fix it. A lot of the people that I know, one gentleman in particular, him and his wife are both handicapped. They have a hole in their living room, well, yea big, that leads down into the second-floor apartment. It has never been fixed. Their air conditioning has been out since September of last year, and they have put in numerous requests to have it repaired. Nothing has been done. I just think that the city needs to do something to help these people that are there. Like I said, I know several people who live there, so that's all I needed to say.
Well, I can't say for sure what's going to happen, but you can probably figure out from the tone. Please tell the people that you know there that the city will more than likely be coming to try to help them, to please accept the help.
Okay, yes, sir, I will do that. Thank you.
And thank you for being an advocate on behalf of your community. I really want to thank and applaud our city staff for their courage, for their compassion, for their integrity, for their ethics, for stepping up to the plate where negligent property owners are failing to provide safe, healthy environments where we have little children and the elderly growing up and people with disabilities. This is absolutely unacceptable.
Especially, this is appalling, yeah.
Absolutely. And I want to thank the city staff. And I want to thank the city staff, and where I can serve, if the staff has a to-do list, I'm willing to assist where I can, and thank you, Sean, for prioritizing the transitional housing opportunities for those who are going, going to be possibly dishoused as a result of this, so.
The folks that live here are the innocent ones in this. The decision that I think that we're all gonna make is 100% the right one, and I don't feel sorry for any property owner that lets that happen, but we also have to bear in mind that the folks that live there, this might be one of the few options they've got.
Exactly, yep.
And so we have to be as understanding and as helpful as we can be.
Exactly, yep.
No one else has signed up, but I'm gonna throw this out there, just out of curiosity, is the property owner or representative of the property management company here?
Probably not.
Well, that shows, that's, well, that, that shows a lot for me.
Just, just so everyone knows, we have, and I think Mr. Bundy can speak, can talk to this as well, we have received a couple of emails from an attorney representing the property owner. The property owner is an out-of-state property owner in California, so we know we've received a couple of emails from their California attorney. We have told them explicitly the deplorable conditions. They have at least attempted to send an, an engineer out on a couple of occasions. One engine, the first engineer that went out, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bundy, said, this project's too large for me, and you need somebody who can do something a lot more than what I can, so. But we have, after getting those emails from the city, from their attorney for, on those two engineers, we really haven't received anything additional.
So respectfully, Mr. Lyon, I'm gonna direct this to you. I'm gonna ask that, based on the decision I'm anticipating that we are going to make here in just a second, that you ask the city attorney to convey that decision forthwith to legal counsel for the property owner management company, along with every single one of these photographs, to explain the exact conditions that currently exist at that location.
Go. No one else?
I will take care of that.
Has anything else to say, Mr. Go ahead, Mr. Bundy.
I do want to say that there are city staff that were involved in it, not just in my department, and they're probably all thinking, oh, why don't you tell them about this and tell them about this? This has been canvassed by code enforcement and the Fire Marshal's Office, a lot of staff time, and it's pretty much near unanimous, or it is unanimous, that, that we all are happy to see progress getting made on this, so.
Well, I think you're gonna be able to tell them how the vote works here in just a second.
Move to Chase. Oh, sorry, sir.
I'd also like to say, with the emphasis and of leadership, the department head level, they are working together to work on other apartments as well. So this is, this, this is not gonna be the first time you probably see something like this come in.
So with that, if nobody else has anything they want to add, move to approve of the passing of the resolution declaring the buildings enumerated in discussion item six as dilapidated buildings, as defined by section 9.2, 9-2 of the municipal code, and setting the date to submit an approval plan of action within 30 days from today's date to the chief building official, and also the other action discussed this evening to convey the message to council for the building owner, if possible, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number seven, and before we get to the item, I just wanna, I've got several people that have signed up to talk. I want to remind everyone that you have four minutes to talk, and we have the timer up here.
Right, item seven, discussion, consideration of possible action of an appeal from a determination from the Traffic and Safety Commission by Mr. Troy Teal.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon.
Starting?
Usually, we give you such a, usually we give you such a long memo item with us.
I know, I'm not used to two sentences.
Before you is an appeal by Mr. Teal to remove stop signs. These stop signs were originally installed per petition of that neighborhood, and then he had appealed that with his own petition, and originally, it stopped at the Traffic and Safety Commission once the Traffic and Safety Commission denied his appeal. It is before you, and one thing that did come out of this, I want to say, is our petition process is antiquated. He raised a good point about who should petition for a stop sign, and we are in the process of updating that procedure, and we will be bringing that to you shortly.
Some clarification on that. If we're gonna look at updating the process, we're, Mr. City Attorney, we're required to deal with this appeal on the process that's in place, correct?
That is correct. In other words, this appeal was filed within a certain set of parameters and a process, and this appeal is to be deter, or to be decided within those parameters.
And if I'm, just to clarify, I'm reading this report several times, it appears that, from what Mr. Bundy said, the, the question comes up where, even though I don't live in a neighborhood that's affected, I could sign this petition.
Under our current process, that does appear to be correct.
Which is really not what we need.
Which is really not the intent of what this is supposed to be, that is correct. Mr. Bundy has brought that up to my attention, as well as some others, and that is why we're going to work on the process moving forward.
So the process, hopefully, in the near future, correct me if I'm wrong, is that somebody, somebody wants a stop sign or whatever, it'll be similar to what we do on the, where we, somebody wants a zoning change, it's gonna be limited.
Right. It, it, it won't, we won't have a 300-foot diameter that we'll look at, but we will keep it within a neighborhood.
Same basis.
Same base, same, same thought process, yes.
Okay, and just clarify, Mr. Bundy, from reading the very detailed report that you got, you gave us, this first came to, first started in August of 2021, where a neighbor brought a petition to the Traffic Commission. It went to the Traffic Commission in September of 21, and the commissioners voted to put the stop signs in, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then it came to us as a council in September of 2021, and we voted to put the stop signs up, correct?
Correct.
In April of '22, Mr. Teal submitted a petition to the Traffic Commission, and they turned it down, but we didn't see the turn down at that point, correct?
That, that is correct.
And what we're seeing now is that, okay, back in April of 2022, the Traffic Commission turned his appeal down, and it basically just, no action was taken, it just, the stop signs stayed up, we didn't see it again.
Correct.
Now it's come back to us on the appeal from the Traffic Commission about a year, over a year ago, correct? And that's what we're getting now, is the appeal on the Traffic Commission's recommendation that the stop signs stay up.
That is correct.
And you may just add one point to that, Mr. Vice Mayor, is that Mr. Teal did make an appearance before the city council back in February, making this request. I took some time to research it and determined that it was proper before the city council to hear this appeal at this time, based on the reading of our city ordinances.
Okay. Mr. Teal, you, you wanna come up? State your name and address, and she's got a timer once you start, it's four minutes.
Okay, you're not gonna go in order?
Well, it's your petition.
Okay.
I mean, if you want, I would think if it's your deal and you want to explain it, that would be the way to go.
Good evening, council members. 67 households, 67 households who are directly impacted by the stop signs on Peabody Drive, signed a petition to have the, the stop signs removed. On behalf of any of the 66 other households who couldn't be here tonight, let me just say that they would like to have them removed. The definition of an unwarranted stop sign is a stop sign that fails to meet the minimum criteria of the MUDCD code, and that is exactly what we have here. Of the entire MUTCD code, there's not one section that justifies the installation of the stop signs. However, now that they're in, there are eight conflicts or deviations from the MUTCD code. I don't, in four minutes, I can't go through that, but I do have the list right here. I'm curious as to why an engineering study couldn't be performed. Per the MUTCD code, it stated in there in two locations that an engineering study should be performed before these stop signs are installed. And at the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee meeting, when the chairman brought it up, the city engineer waved him off, he didn't want to have an engineering study. So since it's per the code, I would ask that, even if you have full confidence in the engineering department, or if you're just not sure, it seems to me that a third-party engineering study by a registered engineer with a PTOE designation would easily be able to determine whether these stop signs are warranted or not. So I would hope that the city engineering department would support such a request. At the Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee meeting, it turned out that the stop signs were requested to slow down four or five speeders, and yet it punishes the entire neighborhood. We're talking about 200 other drivers who are penalized because of these stop signs, and the penalty is their time. And in four minutes, I can't go through the calculation, but it's cumulative over the year. I personally lose somewhere between eight to 10 hours a year due to the unwarranted stop signs in my neighborhood. Stated another way, I lose more than one vacation day a year for stop signs that shouldn't be there. I know some people are gonna want to say, I don't know about the MUTCD code, and I really don't care about that. I like the stop signs because it just slows down the traffic. And I'm sure other people will want to say that we want people to abide by the stop signs and abide by the speed limits, I get that, but why wouldn't you not support the MUTCD code? It is the national standard, developed under federal law, that determines whether that stop sign should be there or not. And it seems to me that they would like for you to turn a blind eye and a deaf ear to eight deviations to the MUTCD code. Excuse me. So what are the other problems? Studies have shown that unwarranted stop signs cause aggressive driving, and if, there are over 40 studies, and if, let's see if any of these study findings sound familiar. People speed between the stop signs, the new stop signs are in, but people ignore them. Worse yet, it diminishes the importance of other stop signs, so now at other intersections, people aren't stopping in there either. Council members, I appreciate your time, I appreciate your service to our community. I know that last week was National Public Recognition Week, and I'm a week late, but thank you for your service. I ask that you vote to remove the stop signs from Peabody and return Peabody to the way it was for nearly 50 years without these unwarranted stop signs. Thank you.
One, one comment, Mr. Teal. I don't know if you paid any attention to the rest of the council meeting tonight, but we're far from leaning to a blind eye or a deaf ear to a problem in Midwest City. Thank you for your time.
I think the people would prefer that you did. Would you like the list of deviations from the code?
Yep. You want to give it to the city attorney?
Would you want me to read them out loud for everyone here, or just?
No, just.
Okay.
Pass it to him. What's your, what's your address, Mr. Teal?
1128 Sun Valley Drive.
I got it right there, sorry.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm gonna give these to the city clerk so that they can be made a part of the record.
Okay, I wanted you to look at them first. Okay, Mr. Black.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council, I'm Brian Black, 3416 North Glen Valley Drive in the Meadowwood addition. So thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Regarding the stop signs, in a perfect world, stop signs would not be needed. We would all slow down and follow the suggested speed limit. We would all be mindful of children walking and playing in the street. We would all think proactively instead of having to be reactive. We would all readily take turns at intersections and consider others more highly than we consider ourselves. But this isn't a perfect world. People get in a hurry, people use their phones while driving, people become complacently and situationally blind. Without a complete sidewalk system in our neighborhood, kids play and walk to school. People run and walk for exercise, they walk their dogs, they visit with their neighbors. In short, they use our streets for more than a thoroughfare. Stop signs aren't perfect, they won't stop those who willfully ignore the message, but they are reminders that our neighborhood streets are multi-use areas that we should safeguard to the best of our ability. They remind us to slow down and be safety aware. When convenience and safety clash, safety should always win. Safety is more important than seconds, and with the safety of my neighbors, our children, and our grandchildren at stake, I urge the council to leave the stop signs in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Jerome Montgomery.
Good evening, council members and city manager. Mine is gonna be very short and sweet.
You live at 1208 on Twilight?
My name is, my name is Jerome Montgomery, and I live at 1208 Twilight Drive, and I moved over here in Midwest City in 2000, June of 2000. The, as you come off of Peabody, off of, Brian Stratt come off of Peabody around the curve, the first sign you come to is Glen Valley, and the second sign is Glen Haven, and the second sign is Sun Valley. They're almost, just about a block apart. I live around, around where it goes to Twilight, and I live at 1208. I've been going through there for over 20 years. There is a posted speed limit of 20 or 25 miles an hour, I don't know which. As you enter Peabody, and on Twilight, there's another sign that says 20 or 25 miles an hour, I'm not sure which. So is the signs for speed control, or what? Because there's already speed limit signs, and, and, and at T-bones, there's not a through street, an east-west off of Sun Valley or Glen, Glen Haven, it terminates. So I really don't see no need for the signs if people obey the speed limits, and I am very much for safety and driver's safety and obeying speed limits and obeying signs. So I'm, as a citizen, as a community, a resident of Midwest City, I'd like to see the signs removed. I don't see any need for the signs to be put up. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Excuse me, before you leave, I have a question, please. So you referenced the speed in the area is 20 to 25 miles per hour, correct, sir?
I, I think it is, it's 20 or 25, I'm not sure.
And you've lived there since 2000, you said, so 23 years?
I moved, I moved from South Oklahoma City over here to 1208 in about June of 2000. Yes, ma'am.
So in your experience living there for about 23 years, do the people all follow the speed limit in your neighborhood?
I've noticed, I'll be honest with you, I've noticed that where I live, people come around the curve, where at Peabody, it terminates and becomes Twilight at Live Oak, and I've seen people driving, sometimes I've seen people driving in front of my house, going up Twilight to Glen Oaks, maybe they would be going a little bit more, more speedy than they should. But as a general rule, in front of my house, most people seem to be driving probably at their normal speed, because I, where I live, I don't know what the speed, what people drive up and down Peabody.
But what, do you drive Peabody yourself in your vehicle?
Oh, that's the only way I go. I, I, when I come out, I come out Twilight, and I go to Peabody every day, come and go through Peabody.
Okay.
99% of my outward of my home is through Twilight, through, exit through Peabody, or coming in on Peabody. Yes, ma'am.
So when you're driving on Peabody, are people going the speed limit, in your observation, or are they going above the speed limit?
I don't see anybody speeding on, on that street, on Peabody. When I come out, I don't see people speeding, whether I'm before the signs were put in, and I, I don't see, I don't see that much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Guy Brandonstein? Brandon Stone? Brandon Stone?
Evening. My name is Guy Brandonstein. I live on 1225 Live Oak Drive. And my only route that I use is Peabody. Because going the other way is, it's a rat's maze, and I don't want to deal with it. I moved to my current address about a year and a half ago, December 21. I moved to Oklahoma from Massachusetts. A small town just outside of Boston. Where, to be honest, you'd swear somebody had a fire sale on stop signs. Because you couldn't swing a cat without hitting one. And there was such a glut that people got to the point where they just ignored them. Even members of our own town council that voted to have them put in place ignored them because they couldn't get anywhere. As far as people speeding up down Peabody, if you've driven it, you'll notice that there are a lot of cars parked on Peabody. And it's not wide enough for two vehicles to pass if you're going around one of these parked vehicles. So, if you're speeding down it, you're playing Russian roulette because you're going to hit somebody. So, most people don't speed down it, that I've seen. And like I said, I've got to go up and down it every day. I don't see the purpose behind stop signs at the head of a T intersection. I've never understood that. On the trunk of the T, yes. So, you can stop, look at both directions, and see if there's traffic coming. But if you're on the main drag, having a stop sign there is more a nuisance than anything. Because it serves no valid purpose. And from what the gentleman said earlier, there was no traffic study done to even validate their existence. So, that right there should be a big red flag. No pun intended. I mean, nobody justified putting them there, but you put them there anyway. That's a red flag. Do they deserve to be there? That's my question. Thank you.
I have a question again, I'm sorry, before you leave. So, the part of this that I find particularly troubling is that we have dueling petitions. In fact, when I compared the list of those who voted and signed a petition to put the stop signs in place, there's one identical address on the list of the people who asked to put the stop signs in place, and the same address that's listed for those who are asking now to remove the stop signs. So, either they've changed their mind, or they're different people, or they can't make up their mind. I'm not quite sure which way to, to read that. But the, the question that I have at this point is, were you, I, I know you said you moved from Massachusetts. You know, were you cognizant of the prior petition when it went around asking to place the stop signs?
That was before I moved in.
Okay. Thank you, that's all, I appreciate it.
As I said, I moved in in December of 21.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part, I apologize. Thank you, sir.
Pepsi?
Pepsi Calagon 3633, Sun Valley Drive. Thank you for hearing me. I have two statements to read, one's from the Neighborhood Association President Tina Clark, who wasn't able to come, but she just made it, so. I don't know if since she didn't sign, she's allowed to make her own statement, or if you want me to still make it.
It is a, well, no, it's not a public hearing, so. Go on ahead, feel free to read her statement.
Okay.
If there's anything she wants to add, I'm sure she could be allowed to add.
City Council, Mr. Mayor, I apologize on my absence this evening. I have an eighth grade graduation ceremony that I am a part of this evening, and I'm not able to attend. I, Tina Clark, the president of Meadowwood Neighborhood Association, leave this statement. It is important that I speak on the behalf of the neighborhood and its majority. Prior to today, we had a resident in our neighborhood that wanted to stop, that wanted stop signs, that individually went and collected signatures of people who live right there at those particular spots on Peabody Drive. Stop signs were put up, and it also appears that there is a school bus stop at one of the stop signs. What a wonderful place to have a stop sign. This way, no matter what direction you're coming from, you stop. It's there to show you that you need to stop before you proceed, just as school bus does when they open the doors to let students on, their stop signs come out also. Residents have stated that sidewalks would be good to have throughout our neighborhood so that people would have a place to walk safely. We have asked about getting sidewalks to Cleveland Bailey Elementary so that students and families would have a way to walk safely to school and back home. Other residents have mentioned speed bumps to slow people down on Peabody Drive. Peabody Drive has a long stretch of road that stop signs have helped with some of the traffic and the speeding through that area. I, myself, as a parent, appreciate stop signs, especially when my children were younger and would play outside. Granted, they would play in the yard and with balls, make occasionally, may go out in the street. However, they are watching for cars. But when a car comes flying down the street with no stop signs, speed bumps, or anything to slow them down, it creates a problem. So, on behalf of the residents of Meadowwood, we ask that the city council keep the stop signs where they are located. Yes, there are several places throughout the neighborhood that could probably have a yield sign or a stop sign. However, those streets are not long stretches like it is on Peabody Drive. Thank you.
Okay, Pepsi, let me hold you right there, turn the clock off. Your name's Tina?
Tina Clark.
Okay, why don't you step up here for just a second? I'm not going to ask you to say anything else, other than, did she leave, is that accurate, what she said?
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
How many, how many residents do you represent within your Neighborhood Association? How many, how many members of your neighborhood attend neighborhood meetings?
We have very few at the moment.
Okay.
But we have a lot that watch because we do Facebook Live.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of residents that can't travel, don't want to travel in the evenings.
Okay.
Four?
Okay.
We used to have a lot more when we were meeting elsewhere.
It's the time, we have to meet at the, at the city council, at the city building.
Mayor's.
And it's the time slot that we have. That time slot changed from when we normally had it, and so it ended up eliminating a lot of our participation.
And you, you will require a renewed why? We just, we had another member that was giving us access to Meadowwood and, at Baptist Church, and we just did not follow through to see if we could get a key, just to continue to still meet, meet there. No, ma'am, I can answer that question. I'm interested in you starting that the Neighborhood Association is serving their purpose for our communities, okay? You're telling me you have four members, including you all, to let you believe you proceed to use Facebook Live to reach out to members who can't meet up? And you're saying that the reason is because your time slot and neighborhood services team that does not facilitate attendance for your Neighborhood Association? And my understanding that part of it?
In person, not on Facebook Live. Our people watch.
So, how many people would watch Facebook Live when you guys were having the meeting with four people? Is what she's trying to ask.
I, I've seen five or six pop one while we're actually live, and then there's several views later on.
Okay, I, I know where, I know where Susan and I know where Sean's going, but I'm going to ask you to just hold on for just one minute. Don't go, you ladies don't go anywhere, okay? Pepsi, did you have anything to say for your, Tina, what's your address?
732 Glen Manor Drive.
Your last name's Clark?
Clark.
Pepsi, did you have anything to add to what you just read from her?
I had another statement from someone that couldn't make it. I'm treasurer of the Neighborhood Association, and I stay on Sun Valley 3633. I don't know a lot about codes and what's supposed to be done to get up. I am a mom of 13, so I do know a lot about safety and how I would like my neighborhood to be. My kids do play outside on Sun Valley, but we walk our neighborhood all the time. Peabody is dangerous before the stop signs. It's less dangerous because of the stop signs, so I am for leaving the stop signs up the way, where they're at.
Okay, could, Tina, could you do me one favor? The gentleman right there, Brandon Bundy, would you give him your name and phone number? Because I know Ms. Eats would like to have a conversation with you, separate from what's going on right here. If you would just give her. Thank you, ladies. Joy Huska?
Hi.
You?
My name is Joy Huska. I live at 1129 Twilight Drive. So, I have to traverse two stop signs to get in and out of the neighborhood every day. I've lived in this neighborhood for 57 years, and I never saw a problem up until all of a sudden. We do have speeders in the neighborhood some. I walk for, almost every day for the last 30 years, I walk in that neighborhood for exercise. So, I see a lot of different things as far as traffic, but I guarantee I can't see it 24 hours a day. But what I've observed is that there are speeders on every single street in that neighborhood that I walk on. It happens, it's not very frequent, but it happens. I have not seen any slowdown from my own personal expect, experience with the number of speeders that I see. A week ago, it was the school bus. So, I thought about reporting it, but I thought, well, maybe it was just one time. I'll let it go, and I'm going to keep an eye on it because the bus was empty, but he speeded from Peabody and Woodcrest, which is a stop sign, where he led off the kids to that first stop sign that's supposed to be stopping the speeders. So, it's not really doing its job from what I can see, but I can guarantee you it's a hassle for people who have lived there for 57 years to try to remember, you've got to stop here now, and you've got to stop here now. Because in the past, I mean, I never saw anybody have a problem with figuring out who had the right of way when two people came to the stop sign at the, or to the intersection at the same time. I never saw, well, I've seen people go through the stop sign now because they're not used to it yet. I, I myself have not gone through it yet, but I've had a couple of times where I've had to kind of slam on the brakes a little bit. So, I don't see that it's really improved the safety of the area. Other than that, I, I just, I think that, I think Jerome was saying that, you know, there's a law that says you're not supposed to speed, and people are ignoring that. So, I don't see how having a stop sign there, they can ignore that too if they want. I mean, the speeders are still speeding. The regular people who aren't speeding, they're not speeding, but they're stopping at a stop sign now.
But based on that logic, we should remove all signs in the city because some people.
Well, or put one everywhere. Put one everywhere then. You have to have one at every single.
You can't put one everywhere, nor can you get rid of one.
I mean, don't you understand that your logic and my logic are just.
I mean, I understand, but what I heard was if you don't pay attention to it, we don't need it.
Well, you're saying that they work so well that we should have them at every stop. You know, it, it doesn't, I'm just saying that I'm giving you my experience in that neighborhood that I see, and I see it every day. And, you know, I know y'all want these stop signs there because you think it's going to save one life, and it may. And if it does, that would be terrific. But I'd also like to just think that maybe we could use logic sometime, and maybe have the police go there a few times, every once in a while, and collect some money for the city.
That's, I, we don't ever look at our cops as they collect money for the city.
I'm sorry.
When they write a ticket, I never look at that as money for the city. It's not what their intent is, then their tickets don't really come and fund anything that we do.
But the chief of police is in the back of the room, and he's hearing every word you're saying.
I'd love to see the police in our neighborhood more often and stop those people who are breaking the law because that's the people who should be punished.
They're called special emphasis patrols, and they can be done in your neighborhood, but also, and chief, I'm sorry, I'm not going to get the numbers right, but let's just say he doesn't have sufficient staffing, clearly, to staff all the areas where there's the residential speeding.
I totally understand that.
Right. My question to you really quickly is, the, the story you were saying earlier about the school bus speeding.
Yes.
Did the stop sign stop the school bus?
Yes, it did, after, I mean, but it blew past me, okay? Because, believe me, I got up on the, on the curb when it came by, it was going that fast. It was not controlled speed.
Okay, so let's use your hypothetical. If the stop sign were removed as you're asking to be done, that stop sign would have stopped that school bus right then?
No, either, he would have continued to speed. But, but my point is that if he was going to run over a kid, he could have run over it already. So, you know, you're, you're assuming that just because that he did finally stop after he speeded, that it did its job. It did, it kind of did its job. You know, I'm not saying that it, it didn't sort of slow him down, and I don't know what he did after that because I was going in the opposite direction. But, like I said, I, you know how people are. They're, if they want to speed, they're going to speed. If it's just between one stop sign and the other, they're going to speed.
So, if you were through, I was going to speak, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Oh, I didn't have anything else to say, I'm just taking questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to say, this is my word, and I'm going to say, one, I appreciate every single person, regardless of what petition was signed. We seldom actually, and it's, it's both intriguing and kind of sad to me that's a stop sign that's taken this many people's time and effort. Because we've got way more important things people don't ever pay attention to. With that said, I appreciate both sides that's got up here to speak. I appreciate both sides that have signed the petitions. And I'm going to fall back on a couple of things. The police department did have input twice with the traffic and the safety board. There are 12 people who signed for the petition that live directly on Peabody, and only eight people against it who live on Peabody. So, the majority of people that this directly impacts, they're closest to these stop signs. More people signed for it in that area than did not.
Could you tell me how many signed that were on the?
I just, I don't know how many, I just know that there were 12.
Just wondering, which ones were impacted by the stop sign?
Okay, we're not going to get into that, okay? Right now, we have one more person that's asked to sign up.
Okay, well, you know, it's just a little unfair that he says something and nobody gets to answer to that.
Thank you for.
I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking to you. I was speaking in general is what I thought of this.
Your time is up.
Okay, and I did not get to sign, I did not get asked to sign the first position, petition either way. I just wanted to add that.
I don't want to be rude, but your time is up. There's a reason we have a limit, because we could be here till tomorrow. Linda Wade, you're up next.
My name's Linda Wade, 3016 North Peabody Drive. I pretty much consider myself the historian of the whole neighborhood. I have lived on Peabody Drive since I was six years old off in New York. People have always sped down Peabody Drive. When you come, when I had a Porsche, I have to admit, when you got on a curve, you kind of stuck your foot in it so you see how fast you'd go because it felt so good. You know, when you're young. Well, that's the story of Peabody Drive. People come around that curve, stick their foot in. Or people come from where Joy lives. By the way, I love Joy. She's a great person. But where she lives, they come rolling down Peabody before those stop signs. And sometimes they just crash into the people's house that lived on the curve. And I think that happened at least three times. That's how fast they were going. And we begged and said, "Come set a cop out here. Catch these speeders." And we've done that for a long time. My neighbor and I, we lost our voices many times shouting, "Slow down." That was, that was what we did to try a deal with it. Slow down. There was one time, there was a kid in a pickup, loud pickup too, who kept coming out, down the road at 10 o'clock, and you could tell he was sticking his foot in the minute he got around that curve. Well, one day I see that, when it was there all across from Woodcrest, when it was the coastal. That truck's there. So, I went in there because I was getting gas. I walked in there, and I said, "Hey, do you own that truck?" And he goes, "I do." And I said, "Well, you and I need to have a talk." I said, "Are you the one who's going 60 miles an hour down the road?" And he goes, "No." And I said, "You got a kid?" And he goes, "Yes." And I said, "You need to have a talk with your son." Now, Dad worked. That was really good enforcement because all that stopped from him. But I'm going to tell you, the temptation, by the time these people hit Sunny Lane, or I mean, Sun Valley, I wouldn't be surprised if they're going 60. They're ridiculous. And Peabody Drive doesn't have a lot of parking on the street. I don't know who gets that. I don't know who gets that. West Peabody maybe, but not, not North Peabody. There's not a lot of people that park on the street because you'll get side swiped. We need to keep those stop signs, it's the most effective thing I've seen happen in just about my entire life on Peabody Drive. So, I may not be an engineering report, but I'm really good at observing, and they are effective at slowing down a lot of people. And if they run the stop sign, well, that's an easy ticket, if we need to put people out there to do that. But I haven't noticed that, but I have heard a lot of screeching when people recognize. I have to do that on viewpoint all the time because I'm not used to those stop signs. But I appreciate the safety it provides those kids and pets and whatever else is out on that street. I've stepped out of the street many times when I was working on my yard because some yahoo was coming by me at 50 miles an hour.
Your time, thank you for your, you know, and I really, I really hate to, your time is up, I really hate to make this a personal deal, but I'm going to take the liberty that I have tonight. 31 years ago, Joy made a statement that if a stop sign saved one life, it's worth it. Well, 31 years ago, my son and daughter-in-law were killed at an intersection here in Midwest City that didn't have a four-way control deal. It does now, and I would have wished back then that it did, so. I understand how y'all want the stop signs done, but I can't vote to have them taken. Have a motion and a second, do I have a vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? I'm going to close this item with one thing that I hope. You all have to live in the same neighborhood. Please don't take this as a win or a loss. This was government working. I know some of you are all upset, but that you didn't get your way, but, you know, we listened, you had a petition, you went through the process. You know, I do acknowledge the fact that Mr. Teal brought an issue to us that we're going to try to fix because I shouldn't be able to sign a petition on a stop sign in your neighborhood, nor should you be able to sign a petition at a stop sign in my neighborhood. So, that's an item that we're going to fix. So, if nothing better, nothing else comes out of this, there's a process that's going to be fixed. Move on to public discussion. Do you read this, or do I? Okay, "The purpose of public discussion section of the agenda is for members of the public to speak to the council on any subject not scheduled on a regular agenda. The council shall make no decision or take any action except to direct the city manager to take action or to schedule the matter for discussion at a later date. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, the council will not engage on any matter until the matter has been placed on the agenda for discussion." And that's exactly what happened tonight. The time that Mr. Teal came here, he came to us under public discussion, we weren't allowed to talk to him, and he came back, so the process does work that way. Those addressing the council requested to state their name and address prior to speaking to the council. Is there anybody that has anything for the council? Okay, on to further information, there's no action needed on any of that. And we adjourn, adjourn from the Midwest City Council and move into Special Municipal Authority Agenda, and there is a consent agenda. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We have the public discussion of the Special Municipal Authority Agenda. The purpose of this public discussion section of the agenda is for members of the public to speak to the authority on any subject not scheduled on a regular agenda. The authority shall not, the authority shall make no decision or take any action except to direct the city manager to take action or to schedule the matter for discussion at a later date. Pursuant to the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act, the authority will not engage in any discussion on the matter until that matter has been placed on the agenda for discussion. Those addressing the authority are requested to state their name and address prior to speaking to the authority. Does anybody from the audience have anything for the Special Municipal Authority Agenda? Who? No. Seeing none, we'll adjourn. We'll move into the Special Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda. These items are consent agenda, these items are placed on the consent agenda so trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any trustee requests to discuss an item, or if unanimous consent is not received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Most, go ahead, tell me what I need to do. Okay? Motion passes.
And then you can just say.
Yeah.
Public discussion for the Special Memorial Hospital Authority Agenda. Seeing none, we adjourn. We move to the Special Economic Development Authority Agenda. We have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agendas so the trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If a trustee requests to discuss an item, or if the unanimous consent is not received, then the item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Passes. Public discussion. Seeing none, we are adjourned completely.